Welcome to the regular work session, council meeting for four P for March 17th, 4:00 PM. First, we will discuss and adopt potentially a resolution confirming the declaration of emergency associated with coronavirus or COVID-19, and I will turn to the city manager, Ms. Verchek.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council first. Happy St. Patrick's Day. Second, we, I am asking that you adopt the resolution declaring a local state of emergency related to the coronavirus, also known as COVID-19. I signed this declaration on Sunday as I knew that the schools particularly were starting to incur costs, and should there be an opportunity for us to get reimbursed, the city needs to have a local declaration in place. So that is one driving point. The other point is that clearly this virus, this pandemic, has the potential to seriously impact the city and our citizens by the extensive illness and even death of citizens. And the latitude that is given to the city manager, who also acts as the Director of Emergency Services, who has delegated the Director of Emergency Services responsibilities to our very, very talented Melissa Foster, Director of Emergency Services. So I ask that you confirm the declaration of emerg, that you confirm the declaration of emergency that is attached to your council item.
Thank you, Ms. Verchek.
Do I have a motion? Councilmember Wright?
I'll move the motion if I could.
Second. All right, the motion has been moved in second. Is further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All right, Vice Mayor Dola. Councilmember Perrow?
Yes, ma'am, thanks. Certainly, and Mr. Verchek, thanks for moving this. I have not actually, you know, I saw the agenda attachment, but I just saw the agenda update. I didn't actually see the declaration, I think, but your summary email that you provided was very good. My question involves the housing authority. What does the declaration cover? You say "we," that's the city of Lynchburg, but what entities in the city of Lynchburg? Obviously, the schools.
...does not specifically cover... Now that you're asking that question.
The housing authority is an entity of the Commonwealth.
Yeah, so I would, I would say that it does not cover them, but if there's something associated, then we're clearly going to work together and collaborate.
Okay. If we look into this, can we modify?
Yeah, there is a state declaration and a national declaration, so...
Right. Okay. All right, I'm just trying to make sure because we're going to have, it looks like we're going to have some expenses that will incur as well. Okay. All right.
Councilmember Perrow, I would suggest that you advise the housing authority to set up a separate code if they haven't already to capture those costs.
I already did.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, thank you. Please cast your vote. All right, thank you, and the motion passes six with one absent. Thank you.
Mayor, before we move on to the second item, I would just like to take a few minutes to talk about the actions that we are taking internally already, if that's okay?
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. So the emergency policy management team is meeting daily, and the emergency operations center has been activated. We had our first meeting at the emergency operations center this morning in person, sitting six feet apart, and from here on out, we are going to meet via telephone or teleconference. We decided that the key messaging to our employees certainly is that COVID-19 is changing very quickly, and there is no one quick response, which we all would like, certainly. One, this is the way it's going to be, but the situation is moving so quickly, we cannot certainly promise that. Patience, calm, prevention precaution, flexibility, and compassion are our foundation as we move forward with this. The outcomes of this morning meeting is to develop, we actually started this yesterday, Deputy City Manager Reed Wodoka is putting together a matrix of essential functions and staffing needs for every department should we move towards a minimal staffing scenario. Employees should be prepared to be reassigned or reallocated or reallocated as needed. A policy regarding COVID-19-related leave and work from home is close to complete. We should have that complete by tomorrow morning. We've declared the state of emergency. I don't know if you saw it this morning, but there was a really, really good letter to the editor in the news in advance from Dr. Dunlap, asking for the following 10 things for the following 30 days. Number one, stay calm, don't panic. Number two, stay informed. Number three, wash your hands every time you think about it and try not to touch your face. Number four, if you become sick with a high fever with cough and cold symptoms, look for drive-through testing facilities in your community. Five, stay home as much as you can, especially if you are over 50 years old with chronic medical conditions. Six, practice social distancing. Seven, don't travel unless absolutely necessary. Eight, get fresh air. Nine, please do what you can to help. And number 10, stay connected with each other on social media. After all, isn't that what that is supposed to be used for? And a recommendation to watch church services online rather than at your place of worship. Save hugs and handshakes for later. We are all in this together. We shine the brightest when we work together, and we absolutely, as public servants, are going to shine on, and we ask our citizens and you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Verchek. Any further thoughts or comments behind Ms. Verchek's? All right. We will then move on to continue our review of our fiscal year 2021 proposed operating budget, and we're going to finish reviewing the general fund, review fleet services fund and airport fund, hopefully. I'll start with emergency services. Oh, Ms. Verchek, yes.
Can we, can we talk about modifications to revenues first?
Certainly.
All right. So, you know, back at the envelope, what I'm thinking about is, you know, we should probably think about maybe, I don't know, I'd be interested what Mrs. Whit said. I'm on finance committee, so I don't know how the flow of these, but I think meals, meals tax should probably fourth, fourth, our fourth quarter be a 75% reduction. Maybe that's too much. Probably first quarter a 50%, and the second quarter a 25%, but I don't know.
So I've asked our internal revenue team to get together to do their very best to look into that crystal ball of what the rest of this fiscal year is going to look like, and then we will also take a look at our revenues as we always do prior to getting towards balancing the budget, which frankly, I think is probably going to get delayed a bit as some meetings are getting delayed. So we are absolutely on it in terms of looking at our revenues and coming back with associated expenditure reductions.
So the revenues that I would see getting hit are lodging, meals, and potentially sales tax, but that may be offset by more online sales. So are there any others?
Lodging.
Amusement, of course. Yeah, I got lodging.
And lodging.
Business license, probably for next year, because they actually report in March, so they're kind of behind. So we should be fine for 2020, but 2021 will most likely be impacted.
Well, if council doesn't object, I'd like to put all those income lines on the list, or at least a staff adjustment for those.
They're automatically on the list.
It's going to happen.
I know, okay. All right, thanks.
Councilmember Wright?
I know it's still early days yet, but have we sort of contemplated potentially pushing back certain tax deadlines?
So, Ms. Verchek, I was waiting for some advisory from the State Department of Taxation on that. I talked to him earlier this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Questions for Ms. Verchek?
Mayor, before we start with the Department of Emergency Services, I would like to just quickly review with you the responses to questions that you raised last week. You should have a handout in front of you. You are going to have a handout in front of you.
All right, thank you.
Please, yes, please.
So you had about seven questions that we needed to do follow-up on, and we have provided that information for you. Number one, we've provided the wish list that Terry Hutchins, Director of Information Technology, mentioned during last week's work session. That is provided to you on attachment A. You asked for information regarding the registrars. She referred to a supplement that she had sent to us as a backup document in her budget submission. We have attached that in attachment B for you. Revenue for the Commonwealth for the registrar position, that is included in attachment C. We have provided the five-year history of Commonwealth attorney caseloads. We have included information regarding the general district court clerk salary supplements, which is part of the state budget, but certainly in a fluid position as well. You asked several questions of the police department regarding juvenile versus adult crime, the cost to train, outfit, and equip a new officer. You asked for data regarding use of the gray key system and the cost of vehicles. And then the last question was regarding the number of properties coming into our real estate rehab tax credit program and the number of properties that are going out. So all of that is included in this information. It takes us a couple of days to pull it together. Please, if you wish, take time to review it, and we are happy to answer follow-up questions as you review it. So now we can start.
All right, thank you.
If you are okay, with Director of Emergency Services Melissa Foster. On page 166.
Melissa, good evening, but good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. As Ms. Verchek mentioned, our budget begins on page 166. You'll notice that there was an increase of just over $1,000, which is reflected of internal charges that increased there. There's more specific information about our budget on page 167, if you have any questions there. Okay? In addition, if funding were available, I've requested $18,000 to fund an interface for text to 911. This interface would allow for a more seamless process of transferring text to 911 calls into our computer-aided dispatch system, which would reduce the workload on our communication specialists. Rather than re-typing this information, they should be able to automatically transfer the information over into our system. One reason it's important that we leverage technologies like this is because of our continued staffing shortage. Currently, 17% of our communication specialist positions are vacant. We have 29 communication specialists, and five of those positions are vacant at this time. We have two people in training, so in reality, 24%, 24% of our positions are not currently productive. Technologies like these help to manage that workload since we are consistently at minimum staffing most every shift. The other reason this type of technology is important is that it reduces the multitasking that our employees are required to do, which allows them to focus on other emergency responsibilities, such as giving CPR instructions, comforting victims of violent crimes, or toning out an officer needs help call. Tools such as these allow our communication specialists to focus on the most important part of our job, which is the people. I'll stop there if you've got questions before I move into the next section.
Councilmember Wilder?
So far, so you mentioned there's, you have some staffing shortages?
We do. We do. We are five understaffed right now, which is about 17% of our workforce for the communication specialist. And then we have two in training, so that puts us at 24%.
So the reason is for that is not listing those positions or not qualified applicants for those positions or advertisement or listing reason?
We struggle to recruit enough qualified applicants to fill those positions. While we are part of public safety, many people still view that as an office setting, and so when they come in, they think that they're just answering the phones. And once they are there, they begin that training process, they realize that there's a lot more to this than answering the telephone, that they're much more involved with these calls than what they might would think. We have tried to have people come in and do sit-alongs so that they get more real experience of what it's like prior to hiring them, and that, I can't say that that has reduced that turnover rate, but we are taking steps to try to give them more exposure so that they have a better idea and understanding of what the job is.
What is the turnover rate?
Our turnover rate for this year was 25%. For fiscal 2019, was 25%.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So your FTEs at 37.6, you've got plenty of FTEs, and they're funded, you just don't have, you can't get them filled?
We're just not able to recruit enough of the right people. We've upped those efforts. We're trying to attend more career fairs. We're trying to work with the city schools. They have a public safety program that they're doing now with the, like, the juniors and the seniors, and so we have an opportunity there. We're working with them, trying to expose them to that work as well. We just haven't seen a turnaround yet. The other part is, is that we work shift work, and not everybody wants to work shift work. Not everybody wants to work holidays, weekends, time away from their family. So that's another factor as well.
Sidebar question, not really related to budget, but just out of curiosity, what's the minimum education requirement for your positions typically?
Is a high school diploma or GED.
Good. I would think that that would be, that would be sufficient because you provide most of the training that they need to respond.
We do, we do provide the training that they need. So, and then the other thing is some of the typing skills, that we are actually seeing a decline in typing skills because they're not typing on a keyboard anymore. They're bright, and so that's definitely had an impact on us as well. And we believe that the economy, what we're seeing across the nation, is the economy is having a significant impact on 911 centers everywhere. Because the economy is good, people are not necessarily attracted to these types of positions because of the hours, because of the work that they're doing, because our folks are not on the scene physically, but they are absolutely on the scene with those people while they're on the phone. They're experiencing that trauma in a secondary manner.
Got it. All right. Thank you for sharing that. Last question, objective number five is the local capability assessment for readiness. We seem to be missing our, our goal last year, and it looks like maybe we're on track to miss it again this year. Can you help me understand that goal and what that, what that means and how you score that?
Certainly. So each year, the state is required to send out a survey and collect information from localities about their readiness, readiness for disasters, ask questions about, do you have a emergency operations plan, information like that. So what happened is that originally, they were scoring that and giving us a score, but last year, I believe, they actually stopped providing a score. So we're scoring it now based on the number of questions, and that's why the score has changed some, is that the, we've had to make some adjustments there. So we're, we're now trying to find the right number for that. So some of that is that that scoring process has changed a little bit.
As managers and policymakers, how should we read objective? Could you give us some advice on how we should infer the information from objective number five? What does that tell us as policymakers and then as the management of the city?
As policymakers, it tells you that we are doing a very good job of being better prepared for disasters that, not compared to, but our goal is that we always want to be making progress. So we are probably never going to be 100% because there are always new things that we can do to continue preparing our locality. You know, as emergency management grows and advances, there are new programs, new things that, new things that they want us to reach for. You know, one of the things that also has impacted that score and sort of brought it down below what we want it to be is our hazard mitigation plan, that the regional hazard mitigation plan...
You're right.
We're in the process of updating that, but when we had to answer no to that question, that brought that score down lower than, than what we would want.
I'm going to have another sidebar here. So this hazard mitigation plan is put, is put together by Region 2000, I guess now the Central Virginia Planning District Commission, or Planning District, and one of my clients, the town of Altavista, was not able to secure FEMA funding because the Planning District was over a year late in submitting that hazard mitigation plan. So just, yeah, you've got these plans, and they're federal requirements, but they are important, and they do have consequences, so just FYI about that.
Absolutely.
And so that would have, that would have triggered that score upward a little bit.
It would have. That would have moved that score up, and that would have actually met our goal. So, and that was something that, that we unfortunately didn't, didn't think about as we were sort of doing the scoring until afterwards. And when I was asking my staff why that score changed or why it was below what our target was, so...
So it doesn't sound like we need to make any changes or in our policies or whatnot to, to make that better. It sounds like you've got it under control.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And the hazard mitigation plan actually will be coming before you, the Planning District will be coming before you in a couple of weeks to do a presentation to talk about that process and sort of where they're at on that. So you'll have more information about that.
Hopefully, they'll be wrapping it up.
We can hope.
Thanks.
I have a question. In light of where we are now with our workforce, would these type of positions lend for work-at-home positions or supplemental or, I don't know? I'm just asking.
So traditionally, the 911 centers, you want them in the same space because there's a lot of teamwork that's happening. There's a lot of collaboration. There, a lot of the, a lot of times, they are really doing a lot of work together. It's really not one person doing something on their own in a sense. However, we are discussing, what does it look like if we truly cannot fill these positions? What are those other things that we could do? Some of the things that we've discussed is we may have to figure out another way to manage the non-emergency calls. We also take an abundant number of non-emergency calls for the city of Lynchburg as well. Animal calls, people wanting to know the telephone number for the jail, for the magistrate. There's a lot of things that are coming through that we may need to find a different way to manage that. Some of the things our staff has discussed is, should we create a phone tree that could redirect some of those calls? Our concerns about that are that we do have citizens occasionally that call that non-emergency number, and it truly is an emergency, and I wouldn't want to delay that any more than we already have by them calling that non-emergency number. The other concern is that most of the time when people learn the phone tree after a while, they just pick the option where they know they can get to a person rather than going where you want them to go in a sense. So there's just some concerns. It's not to say that it's not an option. Another idea that we've had recently is that I don't necessarily need my communication specialists that are trained in EMD and all of these things to answer those types of calls, so could I outsource those in a, in another way, maybe at another call center? And we're just at the very beginning stages of discussing that, but we're going to have to think of other ways to get work done if we cannot overcome this vacancy issue. And we've worked, we've tried hard to keep overcoming that, but we just are stuck right now. And some of that, I think, sometimes is the pay as well, that we are trying to attract the best and the brightest, but the pay that we have is a good starting pay. The pay raises that we got last year because of the compensation study, I think, have helped us, you know, retain some of our more senior people. But I do know that that starting pay, it impacts your recruitment as well, and so that's just something else that, that we continue to talk about and think about.
And what's the starting pay for the publics?
We are just over $32,000. I should have written that, should have written that down, but yeah, we're just over $32,000, which is competitive for this area, but those agencies are continuing to push their starting pay up as well. So we're starting to compete more and more with other agencies. We're also competing with the police department. I've got a number of employees that left to either go to sworn positions at the police department or into administrative positions at the police department. And so there's a lot of competition for our people. They're very talented, they're very able to adapt to new situations, and Central Health is a competitor now as well, that they are doing their own transports, and they have a communication center there.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Perrow?
I am, I'm done. Good.
Have you ever considered contracting with retired officers, police officers, maybe retired or off-duty EMS?
We actually, last year, we actually brought back some former employees that wanted to come back in an hourly capacity. That has worked well. We've also discussed having off-duty EMS or police come and work for us. The problem is, is that what the pay would be at the communication center is not competitive versus what their off-duty pay would be.
I can see that on the police, for the police officers, but I was thinking specifically for firefighter EMS, that if they're, if they're off-shift.
Their normal pay rate is not going to be, their normal pay rate is going to be more than what I can pay them at the communication center because the job is so different that they are not going to earn overtime for that. Because we thought initially, when we started thinking about that, that we could pay them time and a half, and that would be enough to attract them to come in to, to do that on their off-duty hours, but I, I can't see them coming in for an hourly rate that I can pay.
Okay. Well, obviously, you've worked that.
Yeah, yeah, we've talked, we, we did, because that was, that was something that we thought absolutely could be a benefit, and because they already know a lot of the work and a lot of the system, and we just couldn't overcome that pay issue there.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor Dola?
I just have one question. Have you, this is probably obvious, have you done any marketing with the, through the high schools, the seniors that are not, are not on track to go to a four-year institution in terms of wanting to get right into the job market? Do you go to the job fairs, or do you do anything?
We do. We participate in the job fairs at the high schools. There's also a public safety program that has a, it's a 40-hour class about being a communication specialist, and the kids that are going through that, we have them over for a tour, so they really get a real-life view of what that communication center is. We do know that they've had a couple of the kids that have gone through that program that have gotten communications positions in other localities. It just hasn't happened here yet. So we think, we do think that that is a viable option there, and we're going to continue to partner with them, because I do think that that's a good investment, and it also goes back to sort of keeping those kids local. So we're hoping to see that benefit, too.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I don't think there are any other questions or thoughts. Thank you, Ms. Foster.
I had just a little bit more, and then I will be done. I promise.
You have more?
I think I've gone over my limits. So, all right. So one item that needs to be brought to council's attention, that Chief Zudma actually referred to last week, is the possible replacement of our computer-aided dispatch or our CAD system. This is a major system that we use to manage calls for service. CAD is connected to a number of systems at the police department and the fire department. It's very complex, and it's developed over 21 years. Over the last three or four years, the company's been bought several times, and the level of service and enhancements have begun to diminish there. So we've had several conversations with the vendor as well as other customers, and what we're seeing in the future is that this is not going to be one of their premier products, and they are probably not going to make the investment in that product that they have in the past. So our concern is that it's time for us to begin looking for another product. CAD is really the, the tool in our communication center that makes everything... CAD is really the, the tool in our communications center that makes everything run. We feed a lot of information then to the police department, to the fire department. So there are a lot of other systems that are running off of that CAD system. So it's a very crucial tool for us and for others. And then we are thinking that this is gonna be a significant project costing close to $5 million. We're just at the very beginning stages of looking into that, so that's not a hard and fast number yet, but we just wanted to make you aware that that's something that's coming in the future.
Councilmember Wilder?
What was that amount you quoted?
Five million dollars.
Oh, five million dollars, okay. And what is the time period for that? I think you said it's coming down the pipeline? What is the time period for that?
So we're thinking in the next three years that we're going to have to seriously address that. In three to five years, I anticipate that we will have to replace that. It is gonna take us some time to figure out all of the components and to figure out if we can find vendors that are able to support some of the systems that are already attached to that CAD system.
Would that be like, is that a cap, would that be a capital expenditure or?
Potentially, and the deputy city manager and I spoke with that last week, that this is something that we need to go ahead and probably include into the CIP and begin that planning process, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next we have Chief Gray with Fire Department.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. It's both my honor and privilege to represent our incredibly talented employees in our department and our city as your fire chief. I'll turn your attention to page 172 of your budget document as we take a little journey through some of the key elements that you'll see listed there. So we'll start at the top. The $511,000 increase that you see is related to salary and benefits, as many departments have, have already discussed with you, so we won't belabor that issue too terribly much. $3,000 is related to contractual services to better align with our ambulance billing service and historical spending. So that's the allocation that we're using for our ambulance billing services, which currently is out for bid for a new contract. Additionally, you'll see $4,359 for internal service charges reflecting some fleet operating expenses. So we have just recently began to alter a little bit and collaborate with fleet services on how we operate our fleet's system overall. And so what we're doing is in fleet services, all of our emergency vehicles, fire trucks, ladder trucks, ambulances and the like, supervisors' vehicles are all being serviced at our shop located on Lakeside Drive. All staff vehicles are being serviced by fleet services. So what we're seeing there is really a transfer of funding from one source to another. We do realize some savings at the, in the long-term with that because we're getting some better maintenance on both ends. So we're getting better maintenance in our staff vehicles, we're also getting better maintenance in our emergency vehicles because staff can focus a little bit better on, on the task at hand. Additionally, you'll see $107,000 in increased salaries and employee benefits for pay-for-certification and a new part-time professional standards and compliance position. So that's roll, that's two things rolled up into one, so I'll talk a little bit about each one. The compliance position is a position that we need in the office to assist us with keeping up with compliance-related issues, inspections and things that happen over the course of a year to make sure that we remain in compliance and we remain with the highest standards possible. Additionally, this position is somebody who would do a lot of work with data analy, data and analyze data for us. So we currently analyze all of our data by hand quite regularly. So we get information in on a spreadsheet and we just analyze that data by hand internally with the folks that are already in our staff. And so we are in desperate need of both, both a data analyst position and a compliance manager. We're gonna sort of roll that into one position to bring our civilian staff from a meager seven to eight. Additionally, the city manager has approved for increase in pay for certification for our ALS providers, our paramedics and our intermediates, which we had talked about on our previous two encounters, the certain, the need to ensure that we are providing them with the best possible compensation package so that we can retain our great employees. And so this is just one step in making sure that we do that and provide that, that compensation where appropriate. So that's $87,000 for fiscal year 2021. And what that does is that provides paramedics and intermediate ALS providers who are riding the ambulance on a regular rotation, so 24 hours at a time, provide them per diem or stipend, that increases their pay by $3,000. So the, the bad news there is it doesn't go towards your VRS. The good news is, is that we're able to provide some additional compensation to, to bolster their, their overall compensation package. So I'll turn your attention to a couple of things that were unfunded and, and really the most important one, as we've been talking over the past several, several sessions, and that is the $529,000 that we need for nine new positions to staff an ambulance. So we have seen a dramatic increase in call volume over the past five years to the tune of a 10%, increase over five years, a 16% increase in EMS calls just since 2017, and a 22% increase in those same EMS calls since 2015. So we've seen quite a number of increase in our EMS responses. Our call volume continues to go up. EMS responses specifically continue to go up tremendously and our system is overtaxed, frankly. Our people are working incredibly hard, calls are getting backed up, response times are continuing to increase as you'll see in our performance measures, and that is becoming a challenge. And so one of the things that the mayor so eloquently asked last time when I was here is to make sure that I bring to you all of the things that we need as a fire department. And so this is one of the major things that we need as a fire department in order to make sure that we're providing services to the best of our ability to all of the citizens of Lynchburg. We have seen double-digit increases across all of our medic units. And while we're focusing here just briefly on medic units because that's the staffing challenge that we're talking about currently, it should be noted that our fire responses also continue to increase. So service demand is there, we can articulate that, we can show how our response times are increasing, edging closer to the seven-minute mark for total response times. And frankly, I think we can do better than that and I think one way that we can do better is by adding that additional medic unit, having that fluidity in our staff to be able to, to staff that medic unit on a 24-hour-a-day basis. So we project in the first year, that medic unit would run about 1,800 calls. So we've done a lot of data work and a lot of analysis on, on what that looks like. And so while it seems like a small number, what that also means is that 331 times last year, we won't put an engine out of service like we did last year. So when we have a new medic unit, an engine doesn't go out of service. That doesn't decrease fire protection in that particular area. By the way, 331 times last year was more than double what it was the year before. So that's another way that we can articulate how our service demands continue to rise. Additionally, as response times continue to, to rise, so does the challenge of getting our patients and our citizens to definitive care. And so it takes us in some areas of the city, some 15 minutes to get to definitive care. And because of, as we've talked about previously, that we have such a highly-trained, highly-skilled workforce, we have some challenges with making sure that our folks are prepared and can write a report in an expeditious manner. Finally, the other thing that you'll note, and I'm sure you'll have some questions, is the $50,000 that we have set aside for the next three years to assist us with the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus. So similar to what Director Foster has talked to you about, similar to how we handled Heritage High School, if you will, we'd like to start putting some money away because we know that expense is coming and, and we need to make sure that we are funding that expense appropriately so that it doesn't all hit us at once. So finally, I think the other point that we'd like to mention is talking about compensation. And while compensation is certainly a challenge for everyone, I think it's important to note that, like other city departments, our compensation is a challenge for us because as we continue to have competition, we continue to lose staff at a high rate. In, in some cases, double digits. Most of those folks leaving for the private sector to do other types of work. And so it's important for us to start working now on ways that we can improve our compensation and, and make that better for our employees because frankly, we'll continue to lose employees if, if we don't do something. And that's, I don't speak, speak for the fire department when I say that, but I think you'll hear from everybody, other department heads, that's really across the board. I think that's a real challenge for the entire city and I think it's important to make a mention of that. And with that, I'll take some questions. I was told I had to keep it, that part for 10 minutes.
All right. All right. Councilmember Wright, followed by Councilmember Wilder.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Can you tell us what the turnover rate was last year?
Sure. So last year, last year we lost 10 employees, so eight of them left for private work someplace else. So they were not, they did not leave to go to a fire service-related job, they left to do something else. And then two employees left and were able to get promotions at other departments, which I think is pretty exciting for us, frankly. That tells us that we're growing great employees and we're doing all of the right things when an employee can leave the city of Lynchburg as a particular rank and go to another department and achieve a higher rank. Obviously, that also comes with more money and more compensation, but it shows that we are able to do all of the right things for these employees, to grow them and to develop them in a proper manner.
So we didn't lose any employees who were making horizontal moves?
Last year, we did not. We have lost employees that have made horizontal moves, but last year, we did not lose any employees that have made horizontal moves.
Okay. And so how do we anticipate that the compensation sort of adjustments as proposed in this budget will affect comp for the fire department? So we have the phase two of the, of the salary study recommendations and then, of course, the 3% increase that's being proposed here. Is that, am I getting that right? How, how will that affect your team and do you anticipate the easing of some of this, that, that stress?
Yeah, so I'm certainly thankful for the work that the city manager has done, the deputy city manager, the assistant city manager and council, to make sure that we have proper, proper funding where available. Will it ease some of the stress? Sure. It'll ease some of the stress. Is it, is it the ending point? I don't think so because I think there's more complexities than that. Frankly, I think that our pay bands are not in the right place in accordance with the Corin Ferry study. I've shared that with our staff. I've shared that also with city manager staff and the deputy city manager staff. Just to give you an example, we have master firefighters who are currently in the same pay band as a firefighter recruit. And although they will certainly make more money over time, I think it's important to illustrate two points here. When you do that, in this particular case, you've devalued an employee because you have said that as a master firefighter, as a frontline supervisor, suddenly they're in the same pay band, so the, the, certainly the, the optics there are, they're not as valued. And so what happened was, when this, when this occurred, as a result of them being compressed into the same pay band, it also had a net effect of 21% earning potential for those master firefighters. So you carry that over their career and that's a real challenge. So our firefighters who get promoted or don't get promoted regardless of the situation, the net effect is a 21% less earning potential and that's a bit of a challenge. When our firefighters or any other city employee don't get promoted and we don't enact some of the new changes that council is working on, that's where compression occurs because there's no other way for people to gain in salary and gain in compensation as the world around them gains unless they get promoted. And that is, that is one of our, one of our largest challenges. So one of our proposals, because of the pay-for-certification, because of the way pay bands and the Corin Ferry study came out during, during my transition, is that we have, we have begun to suggest that those need to be realigned in a different manner. And we have certainly provided some documentation and, and worked on some stuff internally and have presented that to staff and are, and are continuing to work with human resources and the city manager's office in order to sort of realize where we need to be with that.
Chief, can I interrupt and ask when?
Sure.
We would be able to see that, that, this reworked salary band structure? I think I'd be, I'd certainly be curious to, to see what that would look like.
Yeah, we can absolutely.
I don't know how ready it is for primetime, but.
I would just ask that the deputy city manager and myself have an opportunity to see it first. I, I have not seen that.
Yeah. It's, it's an ongoing discussion that, yeah. So, sure.
Okay. Just all.
I have a follow-up question on, on that specific point.
Sure.
So, Chief, how, how does a master firefighter and a firefighter recruit be in the same pay band? I don't understand that because there are different pay bands for different levels, right? Are you just saying that the range of the pay band is just so similar that it might as well be the same?
The range, the range in the pay band is very broad, which that's not certainly, I'm not discussing the broadness of the pay band. I'm just saying that before Corin Ferry, those pay bands were separate. So a firefighter recruit was in pay band 14 and a master firefighter was in pay band 15. That's no longer the case. They are together in the same pay band. Now, we didn't take money from an employee, so, so money was not lost at the interim. However, again, the earning potential is lost by that employee because they're no longer in the upper pay band. So they have no upward mobility or they have less upward mobility and that is carried out through time, unfortunately.
So there's like a, a firefighter pay band?
That's correct.
And that's what our experts told us were the best things to do? Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
If you'd be able to see what you are looking at, it's really hard to visualize exactly how this works. So if we could see.
Absolutely.
What this.
Yeah, so the firefighter pay band is, starts at 38,001 and goes all the way up to 60, and don't quote me, 68,000 and some change. That is the entire firefighter pay band, so you don't move from that point until you become a captain.
Okay.
So if that sort of helps you illustrate it a little bit.
Yeah, if we could just see it on paper, that'd be.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
And then, sorry, my, my, my last question, this is for, for the city manager, and I understand that obviously you have a number of competing priorities, but I'm wondering if you could just sort of share why the, given that the, you know, the, the additional medic unit, according to the fire department, is so needed, why you are not recommending it for funding?
The magnitude of the cost just was not, revenues were not available. Certainly if we had revenues available, I believe it is one of those things, and I mentioned this last week in my presentation, that there were several things that were very worthy of funding, including that. I just didn't have the revenue to do that.
No. It's a continuing cost year over year and.
Yep.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilder?
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work you do for our community. Getting back, could we add that to the list, the 529, just so we can discuss it more? And also, is there a ratio or some kind of formula that says, that shows how many fire persons are needed for a city by size? I know the city has grown over the years. Is it like a ratio number, like for 85,000 or whatever person you have in your city, you need a number to satisfy that need?
Yeah.
So I can tell you that the International City County Management Association has benchmarks for a lot of funding based on per capita, but to look at, to look at these matters just in terms of per capita, when the geography and the demographics of communities are very different, is probably not the best way to look at things. So I'll defer to the chief to add to that on different, other, other ways to determine what the appropriate staffing is.
Okay.
Obviously, call volume and standard cover.
Yeah, so one of the main ways that we work to articulate the staffing need is certainly through our call volume because we have such a geographically challenged city and, and a topography that does not lend itself to, you know, ease of moving about, frankly. So in our particular situation, that's one of the many reasons why we're asking for nine additional firefighters instead of just six to staff that medic unit because we need what's called a relief factor. And so a relief factor is the amount of people that come sort of with every hire so that when a person is off-duty, whether it's on funeral leave, vacation leave, sick leave, training, whatever it might be, we have a way to backfill that position without using overtime and mandatory overtime. One of the things we discussed last time was our, was our inordinate amount of use of mandatory overtime. We were using it quite a bit. We make our firefighters stay at work and that's not something that I'm very proud of and I think we can do better than that. One of the ways that we can do better than that is by having a relief factor. So there is a formula for using relief factor and basically it is for every firefighter, for every group of firefighters, depending on your city, you need .2 firefighters in order to backfill. So in our situation, currently because of our staffing levels and our staffing study that we've performed last year as part of my initiative to, as the fire chief, is to articulate what that staffing model looks like, articulate what that relief factor looks like. And so for us, for six personnel, you need three. For our entire department, if we didn't do anything else right now, we need 12 additional firefighters. I haven't even gotten to that point yet. So that's not to say that, that this is doom and gloom, the world's getting ready to come to an end, but we need 12 additional firefighters in addition to the nine that I'm asking for. That's to get us started, by the way. So this is information that, you know, I've had readily available and certainly it's been part of my discussions with you all along and I certainly understand that you all have competing interests and, and have to do what's right for the, all of the city and I certainly recommend, you know, certainly understand and, and respect that. But that's what that looks like for our department.
Now, I know like in the, for example, in the. Now, like in the Police Department, there are several positions they haven't filled yet. Is that a similar case in the Fire Department?
Sure. We have, so currently, we have a recruit school going on of 11 employees, and that will fill our vacant, our current vacant positions. But that does not account for a relief factor. It does not account for the time it takes to hire a staff member to be fully trained. We are currently, as we talked last, in the last session, about hiring experienced providers. So we're currently trying to do everything we can to make sure that we get the best possible candidate and the best possible employee. But yes, we do have vacancies currently, and that's why our overtime and our mandatory overtime is so high. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Any further, Vice Madola?
What did you put on the list? Did you put the nine firefighter positions?
Yes.
I think safety of our citizens is one of the most important things that we do. Sorry, I didn't know if that was...
Yes, ma'am.
Agree with that. Needs to be on the list.
All right. Any further discussion? Councilmember Pera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate your explanation of the questions early on, and thank you, Councilmember Wilder, for putting the unit on the list. You say you'll take an engine out of service sometimes, or you have an engine out of service, and that engine is out of fire service when it's sent to an EMS call. Is that correct? Is that what you meant?
That is 100% correct.
Okay. So if I'm looking at the metrics here, I see that the, you know, you're, the national average of 29% of the patients with an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest that survived to be admitted to the hospital, we beat the pants off of that time and time again, and that is fantastic. It's a great partnership between EMS services and the dispatch services and how you all, how you all address that. That number appears to be coming down, though. Is that a symptom of not having enough EMS units?
Certainly could be one of the symptoms. We're, of course, mid-year, so it's a little hard to articulate that mid-year, but it certainly is coming down.
I would figure, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I would figure that, and I don't know how you compute these numbers, but 38% would be, that'd be 38% of the total number of cases that you had to that point.
That is correct. So currently, our return circulation rate is 38%.
That we're not, if we continue on the same track, will be at 38%, where we were at 53% the year prior.
Absolutely, 100% correct.
Even though that is still excellent work, that you are obviously capable of doing much better, so...
That is not the standard we want to set. There's no question about that. We've certainly set the bar high, and we certainly want to keep that bar high, and that's what we're here trying to do. Absolutely.
So anything other than the additional EMS unit that you would think that would help raise that bar? Or not raise the bar, but raise your performance to the level of where it was previously?
Sure. So we talked about fluidity of operations. A few minutes ago, I mentioned fluidity of operations. So one of the things that getting additional personnel allows me to do as the Fire Chief is you all have entrusted me to make sure that I ensure the health and well-being of all of our citizens. And so one of the things that we would do is establish programs that we can go and be much more proactive in our response rather than just reactive. So right now, we're spending a lot of time reacting to a situation because we are so short-staffed, because we don't have enough personnel, because we're so busy with call volume, when we need to be more proactive in order to make sure that we get into a situation where we can provide our patients with the most possible positive outcome.
Okay. And if you had the, what was it, the relief staff, that would probably help in that area as well.
Correct.
Would you, and I've asked this of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and the Commonwealth Attorney, because they're asking for additional help, and you can see in the information that they gave us in Appendix D of this, of the sheet, which was handed out, you can see that their caseload is increasing year over year over year. I know in your report, in your report that you provided us, what, a couple weeks ago, you probably indicated, I can't recall directly, the amount of calls that you're taking, EMS calls and fire calls. Would you mind summarizing that for the past, oh, I don't know, five years or so, whatever's an easy number, so that we could help understand a trend in call units and just as a separate handout, just like we got today? And if you would also do the same, because it's hard to, sometimes looking at these metrics, it's hard to discern a trend, if you would do the same on the average response time to emergency incident? You say that number's increasing. That's not really apparent from what we see here, so if you'd expand on that a little bit and give us more of a timeline for data, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you for your time, sir.
Yep, thank you.
I have a question. You suggested you discuss the pay bands.
Yes, ma'am.
And so if you had the nine positions right now open and available, recruitment, that's not an issue for you all?
So recruitment is a challenge. I would say that it's not as much of a challenge as some other departments may experience, but it certainly is a challenge for us. So we do get a number of applicants. That doesn't make them always qualified applicants. So if we had nine positions, could we recruit the necessary personnel? We absolutely could. So our initiative would be to start an experienced academy, so that we can bring people right in, and we would certainly target a particular set of individuals, because we have an ongoing academy right now. So to say absolutely that I'd be able to recruit all of the great individuals that I need, I don't know that that's the case, but we would certainly give it our best effort, as we always do. We have a great team that works collaboratively in our department to make sure that we get the best qualified candidate.
Have we ever done that before, like an experienced academy?
Yes, ma'am. We've done it several times in the past three to five years. So we started several years ago with one person in an experienced academy, and then from that moment, we moved two years later to a group of five individuals that were very successful. And so we sort of built from that model, then, to the model that we're currently in. And so we just completed a recruit academy of experienced providers at the end of 2019.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's my question. Councilmember Wilder?
One little piece, I'm sorry. So you say experience, are those like volunteers or is that a person in training class?
That's a great question. So when we look for experienced providers, we are looking for both. So it matters to us whether you either, A, have had experience as a volunteer in a fire service and private experience paid in EMS, or some variation thereof. So you could also volunteer in EMS and be a paid fire service professional. And so those are the people that we're looking for, so a specific criteria that we're looking for, we certainly articulate that with the aid of Human Resources to make sure that we, you know, are upfront with what our certification needs and requirements are, and then we wait for, you know, we look for the qualified applicants that way.
So I was trying to get an understanding. So do you have, like, I know, like, for example, certain counties that can't afford fire persons, they have like the volunteer, Fire Department, things of that nature. Do we have volunteers here in our system? Do you have opportunities for that?
I would say with the amount of call volume that we have, we don't have that kind of capacity. I think it's a great question. But what we do have is many of our neighboring localities who have both volunteers and paid service, those employees or those members also work for us.
Okay. I was just thinking about like a training ground for persons in our school system or things of that nature, opportunities to volunteer, just to kind of, as a, we call the, working on the pipeline...
Sure.
...in the STEM programs, so you can get into some basic services like the STEM things that we do into like our Fire Department and our Police Department. I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, so we are in, we're not in the high schools. We used to be in the high schools, and frankly, as call volume continued to increase and staffing levels did not change, unfortunately, that's one of the services that get cut. And so we talk about services that we no longer provide because we just can't do it. That's one of the many services that we no longer provide. We're certainly in Central Virginia Community College on a regular basis. Many of our workforce actually teach there. The challenge there, in particular with Central Virginia Community College, is that you can't work for the city as a driver until you're 21. So that's a bit of a challenge for us. But certainly, as staff permits and call volume allows, we would certainly entertain the idea as part of our risk reduction model to get back into the school system and be more in tune with what's happening there, so we can get them in the pipeline. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you find that that pay band issue affects those experience maybe coming from somewhere else?
Absolutely.
That if they, yeah, if they've peaked where they are or something?
Absolutely. Yeah, again, like you're going to hear, I speak obviously for the Fire Department, but certainly for other city departments, like you're going to hear from many city departments, pay is certainly a challenge for us. It doesn't mean that, it's not a challenge for others, but it means that it's a challenge for us, that's something that we need to address. We lose people because they're talented and because they can earn better wages someplace else. And we just have to figure out how to make that better and how to improve our compensation package.
All right. Any further?
I got a couple more items in the interest of the conversation that Mayor, you and I had. So one of the things that's already been cut out of the budget was a ladder truck, and certainly, you know, our vehicles are something that we take a lot of pride in. And so one of our challenges upcoming is that we actually need two ladder trucks, I would propose in the next five years. So since becoming the Fire Chief, I've talked about some very important points, and that is staffing, compensation, the need for a new fire station, and the need for an additional ladder truck. And so we need two ladder trucks now, because we're getting behind, unfortunately. And we do great work with Fleet Services. It's not a slight on them. It's just a sign of the times, unfortunately, so something that needs to be on the radar. So a new ladder truck costs about $1.3 to $1.4 million, depending on the services that it provides. And certainly, that's something that's very necessary. Additionally, we talked about how the reduction, how we can reduce overtime and expenses associated with mandatory overtime with the increase of our personnel. We also want to talk with you just very briefly about the fact that one of the other compensation things that we can do is we can stack certification pay. So we provide certification pay based on one certification that you have. So if you're a paramedic, you get one certification pay. If you're a technical rescue specialist, you get one certification pay. One of the new trends and one of the things that's been ongoing for a number of years now is stacking certification pay. So we are like other departments in that we have certification pay. One of the things we don't do like other departments in other cities is we don't stack that certification pay. So we want to move to a position where we can stack certification pay and provide two certification pays. So if you're a paramedic and on the hazmat team, then you get two certification pays. And so the importance there is, of course, improve compensation for our employees and then retaining them for the work, the great work that they do. And really, it's just value-added expense, so it's super, super important. And then finally, I just leave you with the fact that, you know, over the past several years, we've unfunded a battalion chief, a captain, a civilian, and a firefighter, and we continue to sort of, you know, juggle those roles and juggle the things that we're missing. And so we certainly would appreciate anything that you all can do for us to help make sure that we provide the best possible outcome for our citizens. I want to thank you for the great work that you all do every day for our city and your thoughtful governance and support.
All right. Thank you, Chief Warmsor. Oh, Councilmember Pera?
Sure.
So I didn't understand what you meant about, you have the ladder truck, you have one ladder truck right now.
So we have two ladder trucks.
Two ladder trucks now.
That are in service.
Okay.
Yep. Probably didn't explain that very well.
All right. So two ladder trucks. That makes better sense then, and one is out of service on occasion because of age and just...
So with two ladder trucks that are in service, we have one ladder truck, much like a relief factor for people, we need a relief factor for apparatus. So we have two ladder trucks in service every day. We have one ladder truck that's been out of service for a number of weeks because it's quite a bit old, and frankly, we had to manufacture, quite literally make a part for it, and it has not come in yet. So we're waiting on that. So our problem is, in that particular situation with the ladder truck, is the age of the ladder truck, and so it's in need of replacement. Well, in addition to that replacement, that's great for the now, but in our future, as our city continues to grow and flourish, we need an additional ladder truck.
So you're thinking you need a total of three eventually?
In service every day.
Interesting.
Yes.
And I imagine that has to do with some of the, we've had a significant number of larger buildings that have been built lately, specifically in the Ward's Road area.
Absolutely.
So I guess that's one of the reasons why you need it as well.
Yeah, so clearly, the growth in the city, as we can articulate, is part of our ask for our nine new positions is in the Ward's Road corridor, as long with the Timberlake Road corridor. So our medic unit, our new medic unit would go at Station 8, located on Gravewell Road behind the Kroger on Timberlake, and then the new ladder truck would eventually go in the new fire station that we would build in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
So you mentioned a new fire station as a long-term goal. What area would that be in? Is that a possibility, or is it an area of growth, or is it something you're not really prepared to say yet?
That's a lot of questions right there. I'm impressed. So I was trying to line them up just so. So we have done some studies already about where that would go today. We think that would hold true for the next several years. I would not, I don't know that I'm willing to say that publicly, only because in the framework of the GLTC building that they built, they were very close to the cuff about what their needs were until they got a little closer because of property values and that sort of thing. So, but we've certainly done some great work to make sure that we put it in the right spot, without question.
That's what I was asking earlier about the formula for city our size, and then also where they should be located, the Fire Department should be located. As I was trying to get a better understanding of that, based on like certain growth, like in Ward's Road area or Liberty area, something of that nature, is there one that needs to be placed in that area or so to cover some of that high traffic or additional calls? So, but I know that's what we continue to work on and continue to strive for, though. Just so we know some of our long-term plans we can discuss later.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. No further questions or thoughts? Thank you, Chief Warmsor.
Thank you all.
That concludes the Public Safety section, and we are moving on to Public Works on page 178, and Public Works Director Gaynella Hart.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, Public Works budget begins on page 177. With the City Manager's adjustment, it's about a 7% increase. Most of these increases are due to two major factors. One is VDOT unfunded mandates that have come upon us, and I'll explain those later, and increasing maintenance needs on our streets, and also implementation of our refuse reengineering that we have been discussing for about a year. Public Works has six different divisions, so I would like to step through them by division by division. So if you could turn to page 180, I'll begin with the Administration Division, which has very little significant changes.
I'm sorry, you guys come back to the descriptions on 179 after you go through the divisions?
I can, and I'm going to explain those division by division, so hopefully, I'll capture all those.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Page 181, we had a slight decrease in building maintenance costs in the contractual services area. Onto the Human Services budget on 182, no changes to the Human Services budget. Then on page 183, the $86,000 increase in contractual services is partially due to a mowing contract for the opening of Liberty Mountain Drive. We need to keep that mowed. So we are mowing that drive, and so that's about $19,000. The contractual services also is increasing to the VDOT unfunded mandate change to the VDOT Work Area Protection Manual. That manual dictates how we set up lane closures and street closures. The change requires for us to have a truck-mounted attenuator, which is basically a crash truck behind any bucket truck working in a lane of traffic. This affected our contract forestry crew. We've got a contract forestry crew that maintains all of our city trees, and as a result of this mandate, the forestry contract is increasing by $50,000 for that piece of equipment to ride behind that or sit behind that bucket truck when it works in the right of way. So that's a large change there. We also propose adding one small pickup truck for the maintenance of downtown and the bluff walk. We need a smaller truck to work in downtown and to get into those smaller areas, so we propose that, and that is under capital outlay for $25,000. These are VDOT reimbursable expenses. They are for street maintenance, and they cannot be reallocated for anything else. So all the increases that I just spoke about, we are paying for by reallocating these VDOT maintenance funds from the Street Overlay Program to, in our CIP, and we think this might be a good time to do this. And the reason we think this could be a good time is paving costs right now are trending down. This has been due to the cost of asphalt. Oil is going down, so the cost of asphalt's going down, so we've been able to save some money there and do some more paving. We also had a great snow season, so we plan to reallocate the $250,000 for snow streets and bridges back to the street overlay this year, so that'll make up for some of these costs. So that is why we think this is time to do this. You're going to hear me repeat this again in a later budget, so just keep in mind this whole VDOT highway maintenance funding stream that we're using to buy some of this equipment.
I think you're pressing your lugmas hard. It's only the 17th of March. You just said we had a great snow season.
It's looking good so far.
So, yeah.
So that's what we're doing there, to understand what we're doing there. A lot of these are one-time costs, so in theory, they're going to be... A lot of these are one-time costs, so in theory, they're going to be, they're going to be put back into the paving budget next year. So any questions with that? Onto Engineering. This is again a place where the VDOT mandate is affecting us. We're proposing an increase of $220,000 in capital outlay. It's for a truck-mounted attenuator, a crash truck with a spreader and a plow. The signal shop and buildings and grounds have bucket trucks that go out and regularly work in the city right-of-way again and in the lane of traffic. So to meet this, again, VDOT mandate, we have got to have a truck-mounted attenuator behind that bucket truck at all times. So that's what we're proposing. We propose adding a spreader and a plow to improve our snow operations. Currently, our primary and secondary route times are taking up to four hours, and while we had a great year this year, that's getting a little, we think that's not really acceptable, and we would like to improve that. We have added Liberty Mountain Drive, Oddfellow's Road, extension to John Capron Road, and then some additional lanes at Timberlake and Ward's Ferry, and all that extends our route times on snow. So we'd really like to outfit this truck with a plow and spreader to take on some of that and have a better run times and response times. We also propose a full-size pickup truck with a plow for the sign shop. The sign shop has four employees, and some jobs can be done by one employee, so we'd like to split those employees up and get more efficiency out of them. And again, we want to add a plow to hopefully help with snow operations, not only in primary and secondary, but in residential. Often, our employees complain that the dump trucks are too large to get down some of our small residential streets, and so we would like to improve that operation as well. Again, these are all VDOT reimbursable items, and we are proposing for them to be reallocated from Street Overlay. Any questions on that? Finally, Street Maintenance on page 185. We're proposing one new streets employee to run that truck-mounted attenuator, perform street maintenance, and provide snow removal. Again, a VDOT reimbursable expense, so it is proposed to be paid for out of the Street Overlay Program. And we also propose, and the city manager proposed it, to add $60,000 to the capital outlay to purchase a mini sweeper to clean sidewalks, streets, and parking decks in downtown. Again, we've made a huge investment in downtown, and once it's finished, we would like to keep it clean. So that's the proposal for that. Finally, Snow and Ice on page 186. There's no significant change to that. And then Refuse on page 187. As you guys know, we have been working on reengineering some aspects of our trash collection for well over a year, and the point is to try to keep our city and neighborhoods cleaner. And as the city manager already mentioned in her budget message, we are proposing to have a monthly trash service fee of $15.02 beginning in January 2021 in lieu of annual decals. The intent is to hold this steady rate for 18 months. In other words, we will not reevaluate this rate until FY 2023. From October of this year till January, citizens will not be paying a decal fee. It should give citizens time to adjust to the new service fee. And also, as we discussed at the November 2019 City Council meeting, we were requesting an additional education and enforcement employee to get citizens into compliance on daily refuse and brush and bulk. We think this would be a huge help to us, and our idea would really be to work with education as much as we can before we go to enforcement. And finally, we are requesting, and it's in the actually Fleet Budget in this particular case, a new knuckle boom truck as part of this program to implement the changes to brush and bulk and to meet our service expectations. They are just exceeding our capacity, and we think if we have the backup truck and potentially propose a new employee next year, but we'll have to see. If we have another backup truck, we feel like we'll be able to keep enough trucks running that maybe we can keep up with this service. And the final change to our budget is $100,000 increase to the Contract for Recycling Hauling. That happened over this past year, and so if we want to continue to haul recyclables, we need to increase it by $100,000. And that pretty much goes through the budget. We've got a baseball stadium budget with no increase.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hart. Are there any questions? Councilmember Perro.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hart. I've got a bunch of questions for you. Let's start with the refuse collection. I'd like to have a longer discussion about this. Mr. Verchek, I guess, when it's appropriate, maybe during the balancing part, to talk about how the revenues come in, the 18 months and offset of those revenues and so forth. So I don't know what's the easiest thing to put on the list, but knowing that we're just going through it now, and this is not the time to have the longer discussion of that, I guess, council policy on this matter.
Could you be a little more specific about what you're looking for?
I'm trying to figure out how to do that also. Basically, the question is, again, do we charge a fee for this or not? Do we vote that? I don't think, was there a hard vote on that? I don't know if there was.
I thought that there was.
Was there a hard vote?
Yes.
To move from the decal to the monthly fee, yes.
To the monthly fee, right.
We have, there has not been a hard vote on an ordinance change.
And there's an ordinance?
Which we are going to bring to you as part of this process.
So the question is, I want to take a look at the revenue that's going to be projected from this and looking at offsetting decrease in the general fund. I understand from earlier discussions, it's going to be probably a smaller amount this year, but I want to, I just want to make sure that we get that in front of us. So how about that? Could staff provide, again, for this upcoming fiscal year, what the revenue projection is for the fee, and how much of that is over and above what we pay out of the general fund, I guess?
Yes, I can, so we can definitely do that. I'll tell you for next year, it's about $100,000.
Yeah.
So it's not substantial. The following years is where you might have some kind of...
Right, so it's affect $100,000 tax increase on our citizens. $100,000 more revenue that's coming in over and above what our revenue was last year.
Actually, it's not quite that much. If you look on page 187, which is the refuse budget, there is, down at the bottom, there's something called Total City Cost. We've reduced total city cost.
I'm looking at 187 right now, but where is this?
All right, the very, the very last line.
Oh, yeah, bottom of the page, yes.
The total city cost is just going down by $12,000, but that would expect to increase over time, but not very quickly over time, is what I remember about it.
All right, well, that's interesting.
So I think we're talking about two different numbers, but yeah, so we're, you're using less sort of city general fund money, which is not a great way to say it, in this coming year than you were last year, but the revenue is, again, about that $100,000 difference.
Well, let's, I'd like to, I'd like to put an emphasis on that revenue piece so that we've got, all got a clear understanding that it's additional revenue that's coming in to support this, that is over and above what we've historically done out of our general fund. The fact that your overall city cost is down is interesting. I need to process that. I just haven't had a chance to look at that yet. Can we put the one FTAU on the list as well, please? Oh, in the refuse section. This is a broader question that I have. It's not really directed to you, but could have easily been directed to Fire and EMS. Maybe it's directed to Mr. Chuck. Mr. Verchek, I see a lot of increases for Fleet Service operations, tens of thousands in many of the departments that we've gone through. Why do we have such an increase in Fleet Services? You'd think that would be relatively stable year over year if we're doing routine replacements of vehicles.
So Mr. Kramer will be able to address that when he comes up?
All right. Would you, okay, so I don't forget that because I'm liable to forget that? Mr. Kramer, love to talk about that when it's your turn. And then Region 2000 Service Authority. I know it's more of a cash flow thing than a budget thing. I guess that's in Other Funds. I'm looking at the decrease in payments, the $21,000 and a half thousand dollar decrease in payments based on use. I'm thinking also broader Region 2000 Service Authority, whether or not we'll receive funding for that and if that's budgeted or not.
Is that excess revenue?
Excess revenue.
It's not budgeted.
It is not budgeted.
Absolutely not.
And that is in the, not the component units, but that's the Other Funds category?
It's just a line that we included in revenue.
Because that was revenue we got from Regional Services Authority.
It was just made at zero.
Yes, yes.
So I think that's all my questions. Ms. Hart, you guys operate a, it seems to me, from an outsider's perspective, an efficient network of dedicated employees. I've had a good time talking to, talking to some of the, you know, some of the guys that are just cutting grass, or your team members that are cutting grass, or weed-eating, or picking up trash, and it's, I just, they seem to be just generally good people, and I think that says a lot about your team leaders and your management team there. And, you know, it's probably one of the most tangible reflections on city services. Yeah, great, the water's there, but we don't think about it all the time. But you see the people working on the traffic signals. You see the people, I guess on the water side, you see them turning the valves. But you see the people cutting the grass on the side of the expressway. And your department's really the face of the city in a lot of ways, and on the, outside of the emergency services, and I just really appreciate what all your team members do. Thanks.
Couple of questions. One thing, the revenue increase is, it's a fee for services. It's not a tax increase. I just wanted to make that known to people, that we're not increasing taxes. I understand the verbiage, but I'm just making that distinction. And also, because it's Public Works, I just happened to be at VDOT one day for something, and I saw a pretty unique piece of equipment that was battery-operated and controlled by an employee. So I'm wondering, do we have that in our city services? Is that something in the future that, yeah, I'm pretty sure it was a tractor, because it was going uphill, and it was just the ability for them to do that with a controller. I was wondering if that was something we would think in the future about introducing in our services, especially looking at personnel. You're very personnel-driven as far as what we do with the work in the department.
Yes, and we have demoed those kind of pieces of equipment, so we're definitely looking at that. As a matter of fact, we've used a remote control conveyor to get the salt in the barn. Used to be, we had a very talented senior employee that didn't mind driving the loader up on the big pile. He has retired.
Oh, wow.
And it's really not safe. So really, we should not probably have been doing that. He was just an expert at that. So, and we've got employees that can operate these remote control pieces of equipment to get the work done, so that's certainly going to be in our future, for sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Moving on to Health and Welfare. Tamara Ross, our Director of Human Services, will present her budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I have several budgets to present today, so we're going to be kind of all over the budget book, so bear with me just a little bit. Beginning on page 192 is the budget for the Division of Juvenile Services. And this budget represents a 3.6% increase of about $142,000, and this is primarily due to increases in salaries as a result of the Korn Sperry Study, as well as benefits. And it also reflects an increase in contractual services, and that line item is used to pay for Lynchburg youth who are sent to the detention center. We've seen not necessarily an increase in the number of Lynchburg youth being detained, but we are seeing an increase in the childcare days for Lynchburg youth. Contractual services in this budget is for money used to pay when Lynchburg youth are sent to the detention center.
Right, but they're not more youth being sent, which is what I'm immediately saying.
It's not necessarily more youth, but it's more childcare days.
What's a childcare day?
The day that a youth stays in the detention center is considered a childcare day.
So they're not more, they're staying longer.
They are staying longer, and what we experienced this past year is, we had a couple of juveniles who had been charged with serious crimes, and they remained in the detention center until their court hearing. In fact, they remained in the juvenile system. So as long as they are in the juvenile system and have to be detained, then they remain in the juvenile detention center. So that increases the number of childcare days.
Okay.
So we are seeing an increase in contractual services as a result of that, and there are some very slight decreases in our Fleet Services as well as other charges. So just keeping in line with what some of the other departments have been talking about in terms of what's facing juvenile services. Basically, what's going on in juvenile services is just the caliber of youth that we're serving. They are coming with not necessarily more serious delinquent charges, but they are coming with more serious presenting issues, more mental health issues, more physical issues. We're finding that the vast majority of youth in the group home are on serious psychotropic medications, so staff are responsible for dispensing those medications. We're finding more and more juveniles who are involved with mental health services, and that just really taxes the limits of what we can do. We are taking, we are transporting more juveniles to Horizon, to counseling sessions. We are seeing more juveniles be sent to hospitals and mental health facilities, so we are serving some pretty serious juveniles in our shelter facility. We do pretty good providing the residential. We feed them, we take them to schools, we do therapeutic groups, but we would certainly benefit from having a mental health therapist on staff. That would really help to cut down on the number of transports, as well as we would have instant access to a therapist, given the caliber of needs that's serving, that's facing our youth. The Social Services Budget begins on page 195. And this budget on page 195 includes both the Public Assistance Budget and the Administrative Budget, and we will break each one of these budgets down. On page 197 is the Administrative Budget, which reflects a 4.6% increase of about $800,000. This is due almost exclusively to salary and benefit increases. You will also see that there is the additional three positions reflected in this budget. We were actually, or we have actually, put forth these three positions in our third-quarter adjustments for this year. The state is providing additional dollars for these positions, and we have identified the local match in current year's budget for these positions. Therefore, these positions right now require no additional local dollars. And I have to give the state some credit. There are actually some other budget amendments that are making its way, their way through the General Assembly that will provide additional dollars for additional staff for local departments of Social Services.
May I?
Mm-hmm.
So is that in perpetuity, or is that only for this fiscal year and fiscal year '21?
In terms of...
Where they, where we will not be required to add additional funding?
Well, the local match is a part of our budget, so we have budgeted for those, and I'm pretty certain that that money is already in our budget. Yes.
May I ask what the local match is?
So the local match, I don't know off the top of my head. She probably has it.
I do. It's 15 and a half percent.
Okay, 15 and a half percent. Yes. It's like you were asking for a dollar amount. I did know the percentage.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Um...
Can you go first? I'm going to have to call up to you.
Okay, when you mentioned the mental health position, would any of these funds coming in from the state, have they appropriated, do you know, through their mental health appropriations? appropriations, or potentially that would assist with that type of position?
No, not currently, coming out of the social services budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm going to put just a little bit finer point on Councilmember Wright's question, which I think was a very good question. So on the fourth-quarter adjustments that you're planning to do, you'd like to add these positions?
The third-quarter adjustment.
Third-quarter adjustments, you'd like to add these positions, as well as you've got the match in your budget to make that happen currently. But that match is available, because it's currently, it's reoccurring revenue in this current-year budget, it's therefore reoccurring revenue in the next year's budget. Excellent. Great.
We've done, you know, I just have to toot our horn a little bit. We've done a really good job making use of our local money.
Good.
To get what we need. So if I don't have to ask, I'm not going to ask for additional funds. And of course, it's our managed vacancy dollars, but we run a turnover all the time. So that money is there. And I would tell you, my conversations with staff is, the sacrifice they're willing to make for these positions is there, recognizing that we need the positions. I, I shared some information with you all a while back about the data, the dashboard data. And, you know, I wanted to reiterate a couple of those points, mainly looking at the timeliness of first contact for our reports of alleged abuse neglect. There's a new mandate that for any report of a child under the age of two, we have to do, we have to investigate within 24 hours. The standard right now that's being set is that we are timely 95% of the time with our investigations. Our average timeliness rate right now is around 80%. So even with staff being on call, staff working overtime, we are very, very challenged to meet that standard. The other important one I want to bring to your attention is our overdue Child Protective Services referrals, which relate back to our timeliness of our investigation. Not meeting this referral means that we could potentially continue to put at-risk children at risk for abuse neglect. The standard is that we have no more than 5% overdue, and currently, we're running about 58% overdue. We simply don't have the staff to do it, and I would tell you that staff are working overtime, and it's just not sustainable. So we would never meet that, that, that standard.
Ms. Ross, I'd suggest that you include that as one of your metrics maybe going forward. Because I don't see that as a measure. Thanks.
Any questions? So, if we don't have the response, and is that because within our families, there's more trauma occurring that's causing us to go up? And is there anything being done on the end of the families to reduce that trauma? Or is it a societal perplexing, complicated issue?
It is a very complicated issue, and it is an issue that's facing this entire country. Without going into a lot of detail, there's a new act called Family First Act, which will allow us to do more prevention work. It's certainly not primary prevention. It's prevention to prevent children from staying in foster care longer, but it will allow us to get into some of these high-risk families and provide wraparound services for them. In fact, our ongoing and prevention Child Protective Services will now be called Home-Based Services, because we're recognizing that if we don't get in there and do the work that's needed with the family, good work, good ongoing work that's needed to help these families, then what we're doing, quite honestly, is just a Band-Aid. It's just a Band-Aid.
And a question, because we are running that much over, is there any penalty at some point?
At some point, there will be penalties for most of these standards, because they are federal standards, and I was going to get to that a little bit in my presentation. I really appreciate the question. So the penalties that the potential is for us to, us as a locality, to incur monetary penalties for not meeting these standards. That potential already exists with our food stamp and SNAP timeliness. But now, that potential could also exist with some of our family services standards. And there's also the potential of having to repay money that may have already been reimbursed to us. Just a small example of just how much these funds are scrutinized. We had a situation where we paid for baby wipes. Babies came into foster care, we're trying to support the foster families, we paid for baby wipes. There was the potential for us to have to pay back $5.36 for baby wipes. So, as the federal government looks for ways to trim cost, or to really tighten up these standards, there exists a potential for monetary penalties. Currently, we've got...
I'm sorry. Councilmember Nelson had a question. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
And I'm going to really get my water.
Get your water.
Thank you.
So I'm trying to figure out that last comment. I'm, I'm thinking through that.
Getting the water?
Well, no. Sorry. If it was just that easy, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When you talk about penalties and the dysfunction in psychiatric conditions that the children are experiences, experiencing, but are the penalties penalties imposed on the city? Are they penalties imposed on the parents in whose homes the trauma exists and may be allowed to exist?
The penalties are imposed on the city.
What can be done to translate some penalties to the parents whose children they are?
That's an excellent question, and I think that the conversation needs to be had with every entity that touched these cases. So, as you are aware, it's not just your social workers that are involved with these situations. We've got lawyers, and CASA, and GALs, and, and judges, and everybody who influences these decisions. So, until the conversations are being held with all the entities, then, you know, it's a good question. But right now, the locality would incur whatever penalties there are. And it, and it all comes back to timeliness. How timely are you in investigating these reports? How timely are you closing these cases so, you know, there's some, some finalization to these cases? How often are you visiting your, your children in foster care? All these things that, from the mind of the, of the people putting these standards, is to keep children and, and babies safe. So, right now, as it stands, the penalties are incurred by the localities.
I'm quite aware of all of the resources that come into play when a child comes before either social services or the juvenile system. The attorneys, the CASA, the counselors, the intervention agencies, the judges, the police department.
Yes, sir.
Public safety. And missing in the formula, as I've seen for 43 years, has been some incentive for parents to step up and do what a parent should do in just a normal way.
I agree. I agree.
I don't know what the answer is, but I appreciate your comments on that.
I agree.
So, when we have these families, and say in the future, we incur penalties greater than what we're seeing now, or experiencing in more areas. So, if you had to categorize some of the, I know it's a broad range of what might be going on in the family. How much is it resources, education, that there are things that we could help navigate a family toward, versus mental health, addictions, that sort of thing?
I can tell you that the three main reasons children come into foster care: substance abuse, and there's substances across the board, mental health issues, and domestic violence. Those, domestic violence. Those, those are the three main issues that cause children to come into foster care. Now, we know what's going on with the substance use issues, and the opiates, and the, all the drugs out there, legal and illegal, quite honestly. So when you get somebody who's in the throes of addiction, and you have to understand that when a child comes into foster care, we got 12, 13 months to do what needs to be done to return that, that child back to their family. So when you think about addiction, and just the time that it takes to even get, to get somebody to admit they have a problem, I mean, they could be six months into the timeline. So we are bound by these federal guidelines that say, we've got this short time period to reunite this family. I will give the state another little bit of credit, because they're putting an emphasis on kinship care. So if, if children can't go back to their biological parents, then we are working really, really hard to identify other family members who could possibly bring children into their homes. These family members, their nieces, their nephews, their grandchildren. And the state is recognizing that in order for that to happen, they have to have some monetary resources to do that. So, we are training family members to serve as family members for these children coming into care. We call it kinship care. So we, and, and we're doing a really good job with that, identifying families for these children to go to, training them, and then they get the, the same stipend that we would pay a foster family. So, that's, that's a good thing. So if a child can't go back to their biological parents, at least they can go to a family member. So we aren't severing those ties. So we're excited about that.
Okay. Thank you.
So quickly go through this. You know, right now, we have six CPS investigators who are responsible for investigating reports of alleged abuse neglect. That number has not increased in several years, I will say. However, the number of referrals that we receive have increased by about 65% in the last eight years. So we see an increase in the number of these reports. Simply put, we cannot meet these standards without additional, without additional staff. Without the staff, we really are putting every child in jeopardy for further abuse and neglect on the CPS side. Today in foster care, we've had 163 youth. Our workers average between 15 and 19 cases per worker. The industry standard is about 10 to 12 cases. So we are running them through foster care, and, and our workers experiencing, are experiencing very high caseloads. And I will say that every day, staff come to work, and we're chipping away at this. You know, we are doing really good with fictive kin, I mean, with kinship care. We do a pretty decent job making those required monthly visits for our foster children, but I would tell you that it's coming at a cost. It's coming at a cost. In fiscal year 2019, we incurred substantial overtime cost, just to get the work done. Not to mention the physical and an emotional toll that it's taking on our staff. Last, last week, Chief Zunerman talked about the secondary trauma that his workers experience. Our workers experience it every day. Our Child Protective Services workers are first responders. They are first responders, and quite often, when they are going to investigate these reports of abuse neglect, we've got somebody from the police department right there with us. So that secondary trauma is real. And then the morale that folks feel when they come to work, knowing that they're already behind the eight ball. You know, knowing that it doesn't matter how many hours they work, then they still want to meet the standard. But I would give staff lots of credit, because I spend time on third floor, and they, they are rocking and rolling. You know, they are doing the best they can with the resources they have. Again, you know, I don't, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but simply put, we will not meet the minimum standard without these additional positions. And the state is doing their part by providing additional state monies for this. Any other questions? So the public assistance budget is found on page 198, and there are no proposed increases So, moving on to page 339. You will find social services grants. There are no changes to the grants. On page 346 is the Children's Services Act grant, or our CSA, CSA budget. There are no major changes to our CSA budget. However, I just want to say that the thing that, that keeps us on edge with the CSA budget, it is so unpredictable. So the number, if the number of children in foster care go up, then we will see more expenses with this particular budget. So we can't predict who comes into foster care. We can't predict the number of children who need private day. And those of you on finance will, can recall that I've been reporting the increases in our private day placements, probably for the last couple of years. And we anticipate that those costs will continue to go up. And we cannot predict the number of children who might need residential placements. And I will say that over the past couple of years, our number of residential placements leveled off. You know, we've done a really good job wrapping services around those children who we can keep in, in the community, but it goes back once again to the seriousness of the needs that, that these children have. And if they need residential placement, then we will do that. But that's, that, all of these scenarios are beyond our control with the CSA. So as those numbers go up, that budget will go up. But right now, we aren't, the budget remains the same. The Detention Center budget can be, can be found on page 352. And it represents a 3.5% increase of about $187,000. And these increases are due primarily to increases in salaries and benefits, as well as an increase in our indirect cost allocation. And our issues with the detention center pretty much mirror those in the group home. The only difference is, you know, we can put them on lockdown if it comes down to that, although the state really doesn't want us doing a whole lot of that. But we do have a little more control with the detention population than we have with the group home. The biggest issue we have right now is our inability to hire and train relief staff. I think the fire chief spoke to that a little bit. Our workers' standards say that they really only supposed to work 40 hours a week, and of course, they get sick, they take vacation. So we really are challenged right now with hiring and retaining relief staff to give, to fill in some of these gaps. So I did it in 15 minutes, maybe 20.
Thank you.
Any questions? Additional questions?
I have one, if no one else does.
Okay.
A lot of the issues that we discussed, the penalties and that sort of thing, how much are we, Social Services and schools, experiencing cost with the same families? How much are you all working together? I know as far as social workers, or case management, and is that something that we're spending on both sides, or trying to meet? And is that something that we're spending on both sides or trying to meet standards and spending on both sides with some of the same families or children that you all may share? And what's happening?
I don't, I, I don't, I don't have any hard numbers. But I would guess that we are serving a lot of the same families. In fact, we did some, some research a few years ago just to try to, to, to try to figure out where most of our calls from CPS were coming from and what school did that represent. And we identified the school. I think there is opportunity for us to do some things collaboratively as we further navigate through the whole school task force and, and some of those recommendations. Quite frankly, Mayor, I think we're going to have to do that. We continue to see very serious issues with our children and our families. And the children are getting younger and younger. I'm talking three and four-year-olds who have been identified as having some very serious issues. And even working with Head Start and some of our childcare facilities with these high-risk families that we know are going to show up in kindergarten someday. If, if we don't really identify them and figure out what services they need, then I think everybody's costs are going to increase.
Okay, Councilmember Nelson, thank you for that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate you saying that because it's a lead into what I was going to comment on some decades ago in court. I would take the position that a child for whom, who was my ward as a guardian, Ed Lytton, or a family in which I was involved, it seemed pretty clear that a seven or eight-year-old was psychotic, mentally ill. And I would argue that to the court. And the judge would say, "It's not possible for a child that age to be mentally ill. There are other issues." And as time went on, it was clear that the psychiatrist, the psychologist, deemed that a seven and eight-year-old was mentally ill. And from what I've seen over the last 15 years, as you just said, three and four-year-olds are mentally ill because of all the things that are going on or not going on in the family. And previously, the concern was that there wasn't nurturing and creative play in preschool education from age six months to kindergarten. And that impacted the performance in school. And they couldn't read at third grade and all of the other consequences that we see from that. But now, when you compound that with mental illness at the age of three and four and entering into school, those are very expensive, intensive professional interventions that are required. And there's no doubt they, once they get to kindergarten, are shared by the public school system. And I think these, as Mr. Wright will probably be in accord with, once the school task force issues a report, those are going to be some issues that, that are recommended to be addressed. And I definitely think it becomes and requires a collaborative effort to deal with, with these things. And to answer the mayor's question, there does seem to be a cycle of some of the same players, year after year, or some of the same families and multiple children through the years.
Exactly. And we've learned a lot about the impact that trauma has on the developing brain. I mean, it's, it's, it's real.
Devastating.
And, and the trauma that, that these youngsters are experiencing every day, and the impact it's having on their brain, and it's just, they can't learn. You know, but not only that, but they're impacting the other youngsters in the classroom. They're taking teachers' time, they're taking up all these resources. So, I say it all the time, we continue to try to employ a traditional model for non-traditional issues, and it simply won't work. So, I look forward to collaborating with the schools and the community to come together to do what we need to do for our children and families.
And if I could ask one more thing. We have a per pupil cost of expenditure on each student. What is a per pupil child placement foster issue look like? If you had to maybe look at your worst-case scenario and then add up the cost associated with the care of that child that comes into the system?
I have all that information. I can certainly provide it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Next, we have Marilyn Martin, who will be presenting on the library. And this will be Ms. Martin's last presentation as she has announced her retirement effective July 1.
You can all breathe. This is easy. Our little library department, which does a lot of work, is very small compared to so many of these departments. So, as you can see, our budget is two, and it doesn't take much time to cover. We have not asked for increases other than the staffing along with other departments. And I can only reiterate that all of our staff works extremely hard, but we have got to pay them enough to keep them. My most difficult positions to fill are the librarian positions, but I need a few of those. And right now, I have one open that's been open for at least six weeks advertised on the state level and on the city level. And I have one person that I can interview right now. I had one other who was qualified to be interviewed, but the pay was just not going to get it. And we had that conversation before I brought her for interview. That's just our reality. So, the pay has to keep up. And I don't have a lot of turnover with librarians because they love the Lynchburg Public Library. And all of my support staff, so many of them stay for a long time. But when there is turnover, that's, that's the hard part. And it's my full-time positions that are the most difficult because they are more competitive. So, as you can see, that's our increase request. The other two, which are essentially an increase and a decrease, come out to be even. And that was just some movement on where things belong in the budget. So, really, just our staff keep us able to help the 200,000-plus visits a year, help us so that we can circulate 400,000 items at least a year. That's books, audio books, videos, print, every, everything to our constituents. And we are serving a broad area. Yes, we are the Lynchburg Public Library. But our items and our patrons are coming from all the surrounding counties. And because we are in an agreement with Bedford and Campbell, we send 48,000 items to those libraries every year to be checked out at their location. So, it's pretty active and busy, and the staff is who keeps all this moving. We do appreciate our amount we get from the state, which the good news is that this year, the governor has approved, and the legislature have $3 million that is a biennial approval. And that will filter down to each public library. And we should see a nice increase with that, which will help us do more things with what we use on the state side to help people in Lynchburg enjoy their library. And I have to say, some of my colleagues, their jobs are very difficult. I can't say that my job is difficult. It's a lot of fun and very easy. And with every hard thing that comes, there's always something by the end of the day that's a lot of fun or joyful to balance it out. So, you're doing a good service that some cities might not choose to do, to have a public library. And I think you should be applauded for that. And I totally enjoy it. And you, I don't think you talk to any librarian, at least in this city, who doesn't enjoy their job. So, if you have questions, you can ask those.
Any questions, Councilmember Perrow?
I just have a comment. I'm going to get in a lot of trouble for saying this probably, but my, my wife has certain ingrained quirks. One of which is, she said the other day, and this, it's just kind of out of the blue, I don't know why she'll say it. And she says, "You know, I really don't like libraries. I've never liked libraries, I've never liked going into libraries." However, she's been taking our children more when they're younger to the Lynchburg Public Library. And you've heard me say repeatedly that she thought that the atmosphere of the library just got better and better and better and better. And she actually said, I swear to you about a week ago, she says, "I think I like libraries now." But I, 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 my point in bringing that up is it really goes to show, I think, really about the quality of people that you have working there and what your team has done to make it a really welcoming, welcoming place. So, thank you for your service to the city of Lynchburg. And I hope you enjoy your retirement. And I hope you can travel as much as you want to by July 4th, so we don't have to deal with this stuff.
It's a bad time to travel.
Hopefully, it'll be much better by then.
Yes, yes. We always look to the bright, bright side.
Well, thank you.
I have a, maybe a little question. Looking at potentially future growth in the city and with the numbers that you gave us. I know we've, we've not, we have the central library, and then we have the downtown branch.
Right.
But as the city grows and depending on areas of growth, because you mentioned Campbell County, like Timberlake and other areas, how do we expand the library experience without a building?
What's mentioned, not in my budget specifically this year, but what is heavy in the CIP budget that you will see is the coming renovation of the library. We have a plan. Now, we have to get drawings. From there, we get the draw, the architectural drawings so that building can be done. This is what's going to need your support. And I will talk about costs down the road. It will also need your support in the community from the fundraising, which will have to be done by the Friends of the Library. They have funded our programs, they helped raise the funds for the children's edition. And they're going to need a lot of support. The city has generously put money in the CIP, and I hope it can stay there and be used for the library. But we will need plenty of support just from all of you and future council members to speak up, speak out, and get that building renovated. Because that building is being held together by a few threads and by a whole lot of work by the Public Works Department. And they're there every day. And you could cut costs for those folks if you actually got that building done. So, everything we're doing costs money somewhere else. And honestly, we could not keep that building open without their continued, not just the, the custodial, but their continued repair, fix. You know, it's constant. We have somebody over there changing light bulbs every, we could have them every day. So, it's just at that point where the future can be very bright for a renovated building. It can be a beautiful and very useful space for modern library service. But it needs a whole lot of support coming.
Mayor, to more specifically answer your question about other library opportunities, we do have a regional agreement with Bedford County and Campbell County. So, our citizens can, can go and check books out at those libraries. And there is a library on Timberlake Road in Campbell County that we have access to.
And that's where the 48,000 goes. I mean, our forest, which Forest Library is Bedford County. And we have loads of Lynchburg residents who just go there. They go there partly because it's pretty and new, and they don't want to come to the Plaza. So, that's another issue that, that, you know, we need to address.
And I'm going to say one thing and defer then to Councilmember Wright because someone just brought to my attention in another state where they have a library experience in the mall. And so, that's what I'm thinking, like, where are different access points that bring city out into more kind of comings and goings of our regular citizens?
And we have done pop-up, simple, pop-up libraries. But we have to, our staff, it was an extra thing to have staff doing it. So, we have not been able to do that recently. We did it last summer, a good bit in the summers, the best time. Although I don't have it in the plan at the moment for this summer, other than maybe more than once because of staffing, unless I can fill this one position because I've got other librarians doing the work for that position.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wright?
I know we'll get into this during the CIP discussion, but can you remind me? We discussed this when I came to visit you after I joined council. Can you remember the last time that the Plaza was renovated?
Well, the big renovation was 1984.
1984.
And there was a little bit of work. And I think they, at some point, had to replace them, the doors, the front doors, which need replaced again. And that was maybe in '92 or '93. So, it's, it's rough.
So, when I was going in there to check out, you know, my picture books in 1992, was the last time we had, we put new doors in there.
We painted some walls in the children's. We have done as much as we can to make it look better and welcoming. And really, children's, we have done, adult side is pretty dreary.
Well, I agree with you. I think it is, it's a priority. And congratulations on your successful tenure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I know we try and stop at 6 o'clock. Probably if you gave us 20, 30 minutes, we could get through the general fund, but we are happy to do whatever you want.
My ride is waiting for me in the parking lot.
Your ride is waiting.
Long story.
Can't be here. Okay. All right, if that's a little counsel.
So, we will pick up next week. Certainly, we can have the work session, I think, because we are just still in, in work session mode. The superintendent is deferred until April because of some scheduling issues with her board. We'll see what happens with scheduling between now and then.
And thank you, Councilmember Perrow. And I would just like to say to council that in light of where we are and where our future conversations will be regarding revenues and what you all will bring back to us and thoughts about everything we're talking about now, we're asking some pretty deeper, or deep questions, I think. Because as a city growing, we really need to take a harder look at delivery of services, quality of life, services that factor into that. And so, I just kind of, I think it's time. We, we have the future transition of a city manager, a new city manager coming in. And so, I want the public to understand how all of these factor. Every year's important. But if you look at potential growth, if you look at, we don't know what's happening current in the, in the state of the economy and what's, that's going to look like impact for a few years. I think we need to really question how we integrate better, how we integrate facilities and services. And we are very people-driven as far as who delivers all of our services. So, the, the ask of technology and how we use it differently. I mean, other industries are doing things that frankly, local government is slower to do. And so, I'm just asking. And so I'm just asking those questions because I think it's gonna be imperative that we move our city in a way that incorporates all of these things as we move along. And I know you all are thinking about it and talking about it. I'm just putting an exclamation point to it. So, thank you very much. Any further discussion from council about that or the budget discussion today?
All right. And, uh, any roll call items just for the?
Thank the school system for the great lunches. Wonderful for our kids and our community. Everybody's working together. I think it's wonderful.
Thank you. It is. Everyone's on a dime, kinda spinning around and doing what needs to be done. I will bring up the census count, uh, for this because this is an important time period for us. And so I know the city staff and administration are working and meetings with the census, but I, you know, I wanna reiterate to everyone in our city, it's very important that we all participate in the census count. This is very important for the future of the city. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Verchek?
I would just add that, um, John Hughes is working on this very hard. And, um, we are anxious to hear how the US Census is going to pivot for those communities who have a large student population, who will not be here on April first. So I suspect there will, will be some accommodation. We will join any, um, group that is forming to, um, appeal to the Census Bureau to give us some accommodation.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Wright?
I wanna offer my, my thanks to the city team that's been working incredibly hard to keep us and the community safe. Um, I also wanted to, I know it's sort of, uh, we don't typically do this, but I wanted to note the passing of, of somebody who was really important to the city of Lynchburg, and especially to the EC glass community, JP Vaughn, who, who we lost this past week. So I just wanted to, uh, note that, um, and, uh, and how much we will miss him.
Thank you. And everyone, please wash your hands. That's the key words of the day. Thank you very much, and y'all have a great evening.